The Constitution. The Constitution. There are? Correct?
Okay, I did serve in Oregon, there are, and the Faithfully Honor Devils Lake Water Improvement District for Best of My Bill. Okay, second order of business is the elections of officers for the coming year. The, so I'd like to nominate Brian Green for chairman.
Let's have some discussion. I think either Randy or Noel would make excellent chairperson's, I hesitate. But that was exactly the reason that we would nominate him. Yeah, normally I would agree with that, but I think.
Does anybody have any additional nominations?
I, for this office?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Brian?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
I'll abstain. What difference does it make? Thank you, I appreciate it. Very nice.
With that, ask the gall if Mr. Green elections in 2013, 2014, board.
All right, the next item of business will be the nomination of the vice chairperson. Do we have any nominations?
Nominate Noel Walker.
I'll second that nomination. Discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations Noel.
Pardon me, David, would you, I know the mics weren't up very high at the beginning of that, would you mind just reiterating what you got, who you had elected chairman? Just because through TV they won't be able to hear.
So Brian Green is chairman and vice chair will be Noel Walker at this point.
Okay, the next item of business is the nominations for treasurer of the board.
I nominate Randy Walton for treasurer.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations Randy, you're still the treasurer, I think. Next item is I guess we, do you establish a regular meeting date?
Yes.
Well, the, the current meeting date is the second Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM, Lincoln City Council Chambers is the location, City Hall, and I guess the proposal is to keep it the same date, time, and place. Correct?
I'm, I'm fine with the second Thursday.
Good.
Yeah, good, great. All right, I'll make a motion to keep the regular meeting date of our board to be, the regular monthly meeting date to be the second Thursday of each month. Time would be 6:00 PM, the place would be Lincoln City Council Chambers at City Hall.
Next second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Consent agenda. On the consent agenda, the minutes of the previous meetings and the financial report, does anyone want anything taken off the consent agenda for discussion?
We need to take the financial out.
Okay.
All right, take the financial report out, then that leaves the minutes. Anyone have any? All right, so if anyone doesn't have any changes, additions, deletions, recommendations for the minutes, I'll move that the minutes of the last meeting be approved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, and Seth, did you have something about the financial report you wanted to discuss?
Yeah, first just one comment kind of update, the capital one bill in the financial report is for $2,000 when, and the actual bill that we paid was $2,646.74. So it's just an update for you, and then also we included a resolution there for the tent, and that we, it didn't seem like we had designated an account for where the money was going to come for that tent, so we provided a resolution there to take it out of the materials and, or out of the contingency into materials and service, I believe.
Yeah, okay. And the resolution reads, "Be resolved that the Board of Directors of Devils Lake Water Improvement District hereby transfers $1,500 within the general fund from the contingency to capital outlay to pay for an event tent for the district." Anyone have any objection?
No objection. I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, for Randy. Sorry. All right, so unfinished business, septic tank revitalization program, Seth?
So there was pretty good discussion at the last city council meeting about septic tanks, that was on Monday, and if you want to watch the whole discussion that happened, you can go to lincolncity.org, click on the Agenda, Packets and Videos tab on the left-hand side of their homepage, and if you navigate to the July 8th video, you can see the whole thing there, but I have to say it was really rather promising discussion, and I applaud city council with moving this forward. So there was a unanimous agreement by councillors, the first thing they did is basically had a unanimous agreement saying that there is a need for the program, and that they wanted to move forward with inspections. Want to start a pilot program that would most likely sunset after the first 250 systems in city limits receive an initial inspection, then evaluate the program, and likely push to expand this into the rest of the watershed, hopefully with support at the county level. Prioritization of, of systems, of which system should be inspected first would be based on proximity to Devils Lake or tributary and amount of water used, based on those two criteria, and these two criteria were chosen because they are the most objective ways to decide which systems would be prioritized first. And then finally, city council did direct staff to begin working on the septic ordinance, so that's a big step forward for us. One thing that has yet to be resolved is what the inspection will look like, but it's more or less narrowed down to two different inspection types. So one is a superficial or a visual inspection, which would be paired with a dye test, and the second is a more conventional inspection where the septic tank would actually be exposed, the condition and makeup of the tank would be known, condition of baffles, distribution box, and at least identify where the drain field is. And then the, you know, if we want to move forward dye testing, that could also be paired with this more robust inspection. Momentum from the city appears to be moving towards simply the visual with dye test, however, they are willing to take some time to determine whether the more rigorous inspection is worth the extra cost, and I guess the, the time too. I applaud city council steps and the discussion that they held. As the mayor said, he thinks that they have almost everything settled on this, and the last question is really whether, whether we pull the lid or don't pull the lid during inspections, really whether we go into the system or whether we just do this kind of surface, surface inspection. In the meantime, city staff was given direction to begin drafting the ordinance, as long as we can decide what the inspection will look like in a timely manner, I don't believe that this discussion will hold up the process. Keep in mind that the two discussions were both, or the two inspections were both discussed with city council and had been accepted or given a nod at least from the county health specialist, so we've kind of gotten around beyond that point. And then regarding the inspections, what I've heard from this board and what I presented at the city council meeting, just in the public comment, is that we're in favor of the standard inspection where the components of the system are actually inspected. This is because tracking sewage effluent and groundwater is difficult, and that if it died, does not appear, that doesn't necessarily mean that untreated sewage is not containing, is not contaminating ground or surface waters, which we had been cited at PSU, that's Penn State University, study for. So the general consensus that I've heard overall is really that with dye testing, you may find the worst of the worst, but you're certain to also have systems that are going to slip through the cracks.
So Seth, is there any middle ground, like just doing a, you know, doing a pumping and verifying the tank integrity? You know, making sure it's not full holes or cracks, you know?
I think
I mean, because
I think that, like, kind of what I said earlier in there is that it's really kind of pull the lid, not pull the lid.
Right.
And, and that was kind of what happened too, and I went down to the county, and when we worked through a couple of inspections, that was the thing too, to my idea was like, can we get three? You know, can we get this kind of light, medium, more robust? And that was kind of the conclusion they came to also, it's like the moment you, the moment you make the decision that you're going to open it up, you might as well just keep, you know, because it's like not looking to the right or something to see if baffles are functioning. So, and then following the, the city council, so I mean, I guess really at the council meeting, they were looking more towards the visual and dye. I gave public comments saying, you know, let's not completely throw away doing these full inspections yet. And following, following the council meeting, I've talked with a few people about this, and this is just kind of a brainstorm that happened this week, and it's really councillor Ellingson who, who had the idea for it, but what he suggested is that all property owners are required to provide a certified map of their system and basic components or materials, for example, what, you know, what your tank is made out of. For homeowners who cannot, who cannot provide that information, they would be required to have that more thorough inspection.
So what's entailed in a certified?
Just a brainstorm. This is like, this kind of came up, you know, afterwards and kind of talking about it. So I mean, basically just, can you, do you know where your system is? Can you map your system?
Right.
Do you know some basic criteria?
Yeah, when Tony came out to do my tank when we replaced it years ago, I mean, he just, he brought a rod out and I didn't, you know, figured out where the drain lines were, and then had me draw up a map.
So I think, you know, I mean, if we did this
That's all they were looking for, so.
Yeah, and I think we want it to be like certified by someone who has an inspector license through the state.
So make it more like an end product of the, of inspection?
Right. Or, I mean, you know, or you just have the original one from when it was put in, you know, that's stamped and says, here's what my system looks like. So what, what I like about this is DEQ does not, so DEQ does state in OIR Chapter 340, Division 71 dash 130, under operation and maintenance, owners of onsite systems must operate and maintain their systems in compliance with all permit conditions and applicable requirements in this division must not create a public health hazard or pollute public waters. And the definition of maintenance is taking the actions necessary to keep onsite system components properly functioning as designed. Maintenance includes, but is not limited to pumping, repairing, replacing, of screen or filter and other component cleaning and replacement. So there are rules about maintaining, and I guess the question here comes if, if you don't know where your system is or your components are, how are you maintaining your tank? So I think there is like some legal standing there, which I think is helpful. So, and then for those homeowners who can provide that certified map, they'd only be required to have a visual and dye test. So I don't know what you guys think about that idea, allowing kind of a less intrusive inspection, if you can show a certified copy of your system unless you're opposed to that. If you guys think it's kind of an okay idea, I'll keep talking about it, you know, it's kind of just
To me, to me, it depends on what, what's entailed in developing a certified copy, right?
Well, I mean, but, I mean, even if you come up with a copy of the map of your system, and what is that, that doesn't really tell you anything about whether it's functioning properly or not.
Well, and then you would have, then you'd still have a visual and a dye test.
What do you mean visual?
So visual would be like going out and, you know, talking with the county, they said, you know, you can go to a property, and if there's really gross failures on it, just by simply walking the property, we can get an idea of whether that's happening. One of the guys we talked to, he called it like a stomp and sniff. Another idea. You know, so if there's, if there's saturation over the drain field, if there's visual cues that they'll look at, you know, like a tuft of lush green grass running down your lawn when everything else is kind of dead. Wet areas, things like that.
Well, I mean, that to me, off the top of my head, that's, that sounds like a pretty good idea, because as long as they have to have some minimal examination, because that allows them to look at more systems than the ones that, that can show a map and a tank and location, are obviously being more attentive than the ones that can't, and so that my, it would seem to me that more of the ones that can't are the ones that are going to get the more thorough inspections, and, you know, it'll be time to do those if we're not fooling around with somebody that's, you know, been conscientious about their system, at least to the point of knowing where the map is and being able to locate the lines and tank.
I'm a little bit leery of it personally, just because I, I ask myself, what does it take to draw up a map? You know, there's no, just because you draw a map doesn't necessarily mean that the components are in decent shape. You know, the dye test itself, if you're, if the bottom of your tank is rotted out and you're not even getting that, you know, effluent out to your drain lines, it's not going to show up anywhere.
Right.
It's going to go straight down, and the dye is going to be filtered into the, you know, into the soils and stuff below until it gets into the water column, and at that point, it'll be filtered and trapped. You know, it just depends, I mean, you'll never, you may never see it for, you know, quite a while, so. I, I just, I worry that that's going to let too much kind of go, too much unknown in, in the overall program. Integrity of the tank is, if that was the only thing that was checked, that would give us a, you know, a real good indication of, you know, what's going on with the system, because if the tank is trapped and you replace the tank, you'll know whether the drain field is having problems immediately after, right? It's not necessarily a, you know, something that you would have to do, you know, it's not like you're going to do one or the other. If your tank's bad and you replace the tank, it's not a complete replacement, it's a repair, right?
Right.
Which is very different than a complete system replacement. You can repair the tank and then you can repair the drain field. You know, but, you know, you know how that stuff runs, so, you know, I'm, I'm still, you know, I, I really hope we can do the tank cracking if we're going to do it. You know, pump and visual inspection of the tank would be, you know, the best, in my opinion.
But I, I assume that 250 means of those that are going to be inspected, if you can produce a map, the idea would be then you only get the, the stop and sniff, and, and then maybe the dye test, and if you can't, so. I mean, and, and I guess, do the ones that just get the stop and sniff count in the 250?
Yeah. And this is, and again, like, this is really, I've run this by just a few people, that idea, and I think if you get a chance, watch the city council meeting, watch, it's about an hour, but wa, I mean, I think the, the direction the city is going is this visual and dye, and I think in the meantime, we have a responsibility of showing them the reasons why we're skeptical of dye testing, which is what the same ones that, that you said, David, of why we're leery for, especially for lakefront properties that this isn't cer, in a lot of cases, it's not surfacing, where we're probably losing it to groundwater, where as you said, it's a dilution factor, you don't know where that groundwater is going, so you're not probably seeing this direct failure. So I'm hopeful that we can put together materials for them and also have them be leery of simply doing the dye and visual. And this other idea that I'm talking about is kind of a compromise if we can't get them the whole way.
I think your compromise type idea, I don't really think it's going to get to what we want as far as fixing all the old tanks on the lake, I think it's going to miss a lot. Through personal experience, I think I talked about this once before, I've know two tanks have been replaced not too far from us on the lakefront. One was, the gentleman did it because of the septic inspection we were talking about for the last couple of years, he wanted to build a new deck, and his tank was under his deck, so he figured he'd better get it cleaned, build a health of it, and so they pulled it up, and it was basically 50% rotted away, it looked like, so it was cheese, you could see right through it. He had no issues, he had no green spots, and, you know, so, but he went ahead and replaced it and built his deck, and it worked, but it was only through the, you know, promotion of us talking about this that he decided to get that done instead of tearing his deck up later on to have to do some. And then through another real estate transaction, a system that seemed to be working fine, had no leakage anywhere, and all the fixtures in the house worked fine, it's got severe problems too. So I, I just don't know if, you know, if there's, if there's no dampness anywhere around the house, and your fixtures work fine, a dye test isn't going to tell you anything. It's not going to tell you the bottom of the tank's shot, or the 50% of the tank's gone, and it's just basically sponging in the ground. So I just, I don't, you know, regardless of what we do, I don't think it's going to, what our initial goal was to do was to find those tanks that have been in the ground for 30, 40 years, or 20 years, and are totally rotten. I think we're going to miss more than we'll find by a long shot. My other question too is I noticed by watching a little bit of the city council meeting that, and I've heard in the past in septic, um, um, get-together thing to the city and the district, there's a lot of concern about people having to spend a lot of money digging up tanks because of the old, you know, they used to bury them and stuff. One was DEQ, I was looking for this, I couldn't find it, DEQ required that all risers had to be at the surface. Do you remember when that was enacted?
Say 96. Right, that's, I'm not one hundred percent sure.
So not that long ago then, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. So anyway, I was wondering, because I was thinking if it was 20, 30 years ago, then that's going to tell you there's a fairly good chance if it's 20, 30 years ago, that it's a steel tank probably, good, high priority, it's probably past its lifespan.
And I know the, the big problem that we've had with this is that the DEQ rules definitions of a failure are so lax
Right.
That the concern that I think city managers having and the city council has when looking at, okay, are we going to do this full inspection is, say you, say you open the lid and you look at it, even if you can look, even if the lid is corroded, at that point then, do we require a pump out to look at the bottom of it? And then, at that point, if it still isn't, sewage still isn't surfacing or getting to groundwater, will the county still require action on it? And I think what, the way that, what I've heard from the city's side is, the way they see it is, if the county can't make them required to do action, then we went through that inspection just as a homeowner informational exercise, kind of. So that's kind of the, the way, I know Hawker's kind of described it as that, it's like, you know, we do the dye test, and if they fail a dye test, then boom, you know that the system is failing. So that inspection is kind of catered towards the county, or you do a full inspection, and he kind of sees that as giving information just to the property owner. I don't totally agree with that analysis, but I think that's the mindset that they're coming from.
But if your inspector pulls the tank, pumps it, I mean, we were talking four, $500 here a few years ago, if we had, you know, a large number. And, but if your inspector pulls that and writes up a report saying multiple holes, sides of tank, or bottom of tank, you know, the county's going to have to come back with some type of repair, right?
And that's been where the county has not been as forthcoming as we would have liked them to have been. But, but here's, here's the other aspect of that, say that that happens, and the county has said, we need the, we want to see these really clear DEQ indicators that there's a failure, but say that that happens, we as a district could file a complaint on our own, and we could say, we want to, there's, we know there's 12 holes in this, or we know the cap is corroded, we're the ones asking you to take action on it. That's something that we could do.
And the next board?
Right. So I guess at this point, what I'm hearing is that we still are pushing for full inspections. I think city council, the, the good thing that they did at their meeting is they said, look, we know we still need to resolve this inspection thing, but we have everything else that we want to do, so this won't slow us down from the ordinance perspective. So they still gave staff directions, said draft the ordinance, and we'll collect more information on the inspections until we get to a point, so. I, I think what I'm getting from you guys is continue, we, we want it, we want the full inspections, and we just work from there.
Yeah, but I mean, just through another two cents worth in, if somebody has an inspection, and, you know, it's just a stop and sniff and a dye test, and they, they come up rosy, and then, you know, six months later, somebody's circulating a petition to form an LID, and, and that person's saying, well, why, you know, I don't need, I don't need sewer, my 30-year-old septic system's just fine, I just had it approved, it was validated as working fine, I think you're going to lose support for, can cause you to unnecessarily and sort of unwittingly lose support for LIDs that, for people that should be supporting it, and they should just know their system's 30 years old. They got pretty much, you know, you got a system that's on the verge of failure, even if there's no obvious sign of it. I think that's another problem with the minimal inspection rate.
Yeah, I agree, and that's, and that was one of the, the points that we made in the, the public comment at their meeting.
So is there, is there a timeframe set for the staff to present a draft of an ordinance to the?
No, not at this point. But I, I mean, I would think it, I, I don't know how long it would be. I know Hawker's on vacation this week, so probably not even beginning to delegate that task till like next week.
So is the next step to wait for the staff to come back with the draft?
I mean, I think that we continue to, to advocate for a full inspection from our perspective, I know city council is interested in talking to DEQ about it, talking to the county sanitarian about her health specialist about it, and possibly talking to a few private inspectors too, so I think they are at that informational gathering stage. And I'm, and I'm hopeful that, because what happened with me on that is people said a dye test, and I was like, okay, if that works, go for it. And then through the research of it, kind of came to the conclusions that David you were talking about earlier, that it's just, in the circumstances that we have, it may not, it's, might not be the most effective way to go. Completely invaluable, certainly not, but may not be the way to go.
What, what is the cost comparison between dye test and actually having it pumped?
You know, that's something that we don't really know either, and that, we may not know that until we put a bid out on it, because that was something I was thinking about, is people are saying, well, the dye test should be cheaper because you're just walking the property and putting dye in, and I think it's like $15 or something to, for the actual dye. But the thing with dye is that you need to come back, and you need to keep checking on that, you know, it's not like you put the dye and you flush the toilet, and it's like, oh, boom, green. It can be a multi-week process. So now if you're paying a certified inspector to come out and, and look at the property, and I don't know how they're going to look at a lakefront property, you know, going into the water or something, I guess they can get around that, but, you know, the number of revisits to it, I think is also a question that, actually, it might not be that different for the two, so it's something to be determined, and that was also something that city council had asked for.
Well, I, I watched a bit of that meeting the other night, and I noticed one of the councillors was really councillors was really concerned about the cost, wanted to make it as inexpensive as possible. But if it isn't effective, I don't see the point. So, you know, over a period of how many years does the average person continue with a septic system that doesn't cost them anything versus a sewer where they have to pay so much every month? I, I think having to pay five hundred dollars or in that vicinity, um, one time over a long period of years is not too much to ask, especially when we're trying to accomplish what we're trying to get done.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Right.
Well, I, you know, then I guess the consensus is that we'd like to keep our position in front of the, the city that we, we want to see more thorough inspections than, than the more lenient, you know, stop and sniff and dye tests.
Okay, that sounds good.
All right, so, next item is the save our shoreline campaign.
Um, so we have a video that's about ninety plus percent complete. Do you guys wanna watch it? We can, it's about five minutes, four to five minutes.
Wait till it's done.
Yeah, is it gonna be done by next meeting?
It should be, yeah. I think we just, there's a couple shots that I think we could get better, better shots of what we have and then like a little more, like editing. But otherwise, I mean, it's pretty complete beyond that.
Well, let's wait, see if they're completed, so we don't have to be guessing about which part's incomplete and, you know, which is, that might be changed anyway, so. All right, so, the small topic of vegetation management.
Um, so this is just Paul's report. He completed the engineering study titled topographic and hydraulic maps of the Devils Lake watershed, that's available online. And this report will serve our application for grass carp. Document includes a series of maps from nineteen fifty-five to twenty thirteen and describes their intended use, which is identification of surface waters in the watershed for potential fish control structures. He also included the, uh, the emails from Bob Buckman detailing why Devils Lake is not required or should not, isn't currently required to have fish control structures. And, uh, there's also likely cause for such even with potential for new, nor why there's likely cause for such even with the potential for new introductions of grass carp. Um, then the stocking schedule should be completed by July nineteenth, twenty thirteen. And also we are working on an outreach campaign to get people to show some public support for our, uh, application for grass carp. There's this FAQ that Paul created, it's available, uh, right here as you come into the meeting. It's also available online. Um, and it's basically just, and then in addition to frequently asked questions about grass carp and why we're applying and, and this and that, um, there's also a one-page letter on the back, that's just kind of a sample letter that if people are interested in providing letters. And as he states here, we've had sixty-six respondents to our grass carp survey and of those three-fourths are willing to play some direct role. So as soon as we know the date for sure that we'll be in front of the commission, we can really re-engage with those people. And then finally, just the, the submission actually to ODFW, to the commission. Our consultant has notified ODFW of our intent to submit an appeal to the rules governing grass carp in Devils Lake. And in that notification has asked that we may be offered a chance to present to the commission at their October fourth meeting. The actual submission will be sent to the board for your review, which I believe that you've all received at this point. And then you have the opportunity to review those and then, uh, you know, just share that information with Paul and he can put that, give those comments to Ilers.
And then the, well, that's, and we already have it.
Right.
You have the application and his letter, and that's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Can anyone, board members or you explain, I'm not quite understanding the stocking schedule issue when he's saying in his, I thought he said in his report that he's recommending, at least as a starting point, a stocking density of less than one fish per acre? Am I, am I misunderstanding something? Pardon?
Was that annually?
To be honest, I haven't been very connected with this project. But I would ask your area questions here even and send them to Paul, because he will hear them, because I'm sure he'll watch this meeting.
Well, Randy, are you, you understood that the same way?
I did.
But is that intended to be an upper limit? I mean, you can't...
Uh, maybe an annual.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to...
Okay, I didn't get the annual part. I thought, you know, the stock and, and then, I mean, maybe you go back and say, well, we need more, but, so the idea would be some kind of limit of a one per acre or less. Well, okay, I guess, I guess that's a question for Paul. I mean, he would know.
I was under the impression that once we, if we do get permission, that, that would be, we would just put in a small amount, but that if we needed, we felt that we needed more, a year or two years later, we could do it again without having to go back and we could do this as needed. And so therefore, that's why I took it as an annual thing is because that would be approximately what we would put in at any given time.
Well, yeah, I guess that's my point. I mean, we need to make sure the application gives us enough leeway to be able to, you know, adjust the stocking density to, to the need and the need he presents is keep sort of a, a control of macrophytes without eliminating completely. He's trying to walk, that's the goal.
We should receive that next week, correct?
Well, that's what I'm actually planning on making this submission.
Yeah.
So that you should, you should have it then now, the actual report. And I think Paul was looking for final comments by the beginning of next week.
Well, what, what Ilers says is that he didn't provide all the attachments to the letter, which because it would clog our emails and I think either one of the attachments is the stocking schedule or he hasn't completed the stocking schedule yet. But he makes reference to a one fish per acre thing in his, in, in, in his letter. So that's what's bothering me. I, I guess we just, simple, rather than debate it more, talk about it more here, let's just ask Paul and then have him, yeah, ask Ilers what, what sort of flexibility is being built into the stocking density to meet, um, the need for keeping the macrophytes under control.
Okay. And I, and I know too in talking to Paul, you know, we went kind of through these things before this meeting and the July nineteenth submission date is not a hundred percent set in stone. So if there is, you know, if you wanna contact him next week and there's a red flag that you raise that requires more time, this could come back to you guys in, in August and it wouldn't really set us back.
Okay, great.
Yes, it's not like you're green lighting everything.
That's my only issue with, with the application is letter. I think the rest of it's great. And that may be great too. I just need some clarification. Anything more on vegetation management? Uh, sewer report is short and sweet. Not much has happened, at least visibly to me. The ball is kind of in the city's court now to do the sort of administrative tasks of, of getting easements for the, for the laterals where they have to, determining where, you know, they're given, they're asking people to, to tell them where they would like the hookup to be in the road in relation to their property. And I don't know if they have, I haven't been told that they have all that information yet. So, um, I, I kind of gave you the schedule last, last meeting and, uh, basically there's a lot of work to be done, but they, the completion date estimated in their timeline is August of two thousand fourteen for actual installation of the line so that it's ready for people hook, to hook up the sewer. Did I say August of two thousand fourteen?
Yeah.
That concludes the sewer report. Communications report. Let you do that, Seth. Or is there anything more than what's in the written minutes really?
Um, on Tuesday, July sixteenth, in addition to Paul and Michelle being on our regular show on KBCH, uh, at nine AM, I'll be on K-Cup. It's twelve-thirty AM or one hundred point seven FM. And that's mostly to talk about the Devils Lake revival and I'm sure we'll delve into some other DLW ID issues too.
Okay. Safety report, any incidents to report?
Just the revival. Is it, we have a bigger, bigger things on that. So can I?
I'm sorry, I missed that. What'd you say about the revival?
Um, just the last one, the Devils Lake revival, we actually have some updates and that's part of the communication report kind of buried at the bottom.
Oh, well, go ahead. No, that's important. It's coming up. Yeah.
Um, yeah, so we're just over a week away now from Devils Lake revival. Takes place on Saturday, July twentieth from ten AM to two PM at Urgata Park. And the focus of the last month has really been promotion. So we're having ads running on the NewsGuard, News Times, Oregon Coast Today, Salem Weekly, uh, radio ads on Kite, one oh two point seven, KBCH, fourteen hundred, AM, KC RF ninety-seven and ninety-eight FM. As I was just mentioning, we'll also be promoting on what's going on in Lincoln City with Karen Richards on K-Cup. That's the, on Tuesday. And then we also have posters using our listserv and advertising, and the banner on City Hall. I don't know if anyone saw that on the fourth floor of this building. There's a sign for Devils Lake revival. And then today was kind of a news day. We talked, Oregon Coast Today didn't interview and we talked with, uh, News Times didn't interview, News Guard didn't interview, a little bit today and yesterday. Um, so the word about it is definitely, definitely getting out. We had, this was kind of cool too. I was on, looking on Google on Sunday, like Google News and for me, I have like a greater Portland area, so I clicked on that and the top story was Devils Lake revival. So that's pretty cool, getting some kind of bigger push. And thanks to the VCB who provided us the grant for the event, but in addition just to the thirty-five hundred, they have also provided a lot of support other than just the sign. But I think the Beach Connection who, who published that story was someone that they had sent that through, they sent our press release out to like a bigger network of people. And they've just been really helpful, I think, in, in helping us promote the event outside of the area. And the event itself is looking to be pretty good. It's coming together pretty well and definitely like starting to get some excited about it, getting phone calls in the office and things like that. So just a list, we have live music by Anton Mizrak and the Schooner Creek String Band is coming back again this year to do a short set. I'm doing one set. They were, they're here the first year. We'll again have food provided by the Backpack Program. We'll have veggie options and chowder will be there. The Tiger Shark Surf Club will be around helping us in a variety of ways, one of which is doing a stand-up paddleboard across the lake as kind of a kickoff to the event. Over a dozen educational and agency booths. We're teaming with Let There Be Arts, who's gonna be having some art projects available there. We'll have face painting by Dan the Magic Man. In-water safety demonstration again by North Lincoln Fire and Rescue if they're available that day. Kids educational activities, prizes. We purchased one of the One World Soccer Balls. If anyone remembers the gentleman who was walking from Seattle to Brazil and sadly got hit, um, on his way, he was promoting these One World Soccer Balls, which are these like these indestructible balls that you can use in like third world countries and things like that. So we purchased one of those and it's actually a pretty solid ball. Like I played a lot of soccer as a kid and it's like, it's a pretty good ball, so it's cool to see that. Then we have fishing poles, frisbees, and of course, we will again be giving away a free kayak. And then all the in-water activities, pontoon boat tours, kayak tours, stand-up paddleboarding, um, and the water polo match, which again will be back. And it's pretty good quality water polo. Last year, I think there was a couple of like past Olympians who were playing. So it's definitely like entertaining, quality. And then the people that play are pretty fun too. They like trash talk each other the whole time and it's certainly like entertaining. And then there's the...
What time is that, the water polo? Is it set?
Uh, it'll start at noon.
Noon?
Yeah, and it goes from like noon to about one-thirty. And they're around there like beforehand, just kind of throwing the ball around. But then we have to pay for all this stuff too, so.
I had a quick question for you, Seth Ruhl. Says stand-up paddleboard lessons and rentals? Are we doing rentals?
Um, it's not really rentals. I mean, it's more like demonstrations.
I think I saw that on some other piece of advertisement.
This is rentals on it?
And if you can push the free stand-up paddleboard lesson, or free stand-up paddleboards and canoes and stuff.
Yeah.
It's gonna entice more people come down.
Okay. Well, then you will love our radio ad because it just says free throughout the whole thing. It's pretty great. Um, so I've also included the budget, uh, for this event. And I think when I brought it to you guys the first time, you said, well, can you like put everything out and really see what it all is? So here it's, it's all laid out. Um, so we really just need, um, a motion to, to actually allocate the funds. I think the total then should probably be forty, forty-five hundred should cover us, even if we have a couple contingency dollars in there too.
So I guess I'll make a motion that we allocate forty-five hundred dollars from the Public Relations Fund for the twenty thirteen Devils Lake Revival.
I'll second that motion. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
And then, Paul just asked them that we just put this note in here. We, when we did our annual budget, we budgeted three thousand for the revival. Somewhere there, I don't know if we just didn't think about the VCB funds coming in there. We basically kind of under budgeted for what I think we did expect to expend on it. So it's just something to keep in mind is that we've, that fifteen hundred dollars within the Public Relations Fund of our budget is being used to cover that fifteen hundred oversight for the revival, which shouldn't be a problem. I think it would just be a problem if we do everything that's stated in the Public Relations side and that we pull all that money from the Public Relations side. Does that make sense? It was, okay. You guys are faster than me because it took me like...
Well, no, but we already, I mean, I certainly signed the, the resolution to that effect. I thought we talked about that earlier.
That's for the tent. He's talking the difference between the budget of three thousand dollars for the revival and the forty-five hundred.
Which is the same amount as the fifteen hundred.
Right, which is the same amount, yeah. Do we have the money in there to cover it?
Right.
Is this short?
Oh, right, 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 right.
You have the money in the, we have the money in the fund, in the account, or...
It does not require a resolution. It's just there and it's just...
Yeah, and it's just something to think about in the future, right.
Okay.
I suppose we could have moved money from the grants, the VCB grant money coming in over to it to adjust for it, but it doesn't matter.
Right.
Do that later if we need to. Okay.
Right, if we need to. Okay.
Well, I'm looking forward to the revival.
Yeah, should be good.
It's really gonna be cool.
What time do you have me sign up for, for pontoon boats?
All day.
Thanks.
Two or three?
Do you guys, that is a good question, actually, now that we have you here, Noel.
Yeah.
Are we, are we gonna have two or three?
We're only gonna have two until three comes available. I, I just got really slowed down by events and, and breakage of boats, et cetera. So I'm caught up now and I'm working on it, but I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna promise the big one.
Okay.
So, but anyway, the other two are in fine fettle. One of them's better than before.
Are we gonna get the big stainless deal?
That's, see, that's the one I would, I want it to be there. I really do. But I've run into things like lately, the, the slider windows, they just gave me real pain. So anyway, that's actually a play on words. I didn't intend, but, um, anyway, but if I get it ready, I'll, I'll be there. I really wanna be down there with it, so I'm gonna, I'm really putting a rush on it.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Noel.
Yeah.
All right, um, no, safety report, no incidents, right?
Right.
Mid-coast TMDL, total maximum daily load. Total maximum daily load.
And I think if you guys are okay with just seeing the printed part of that staff report, I looked through like items D, E, and F, and I think most of them are just kind of small updates. I mean, I can read a staff report if you want, but I don't have much to add.
I'm good with what's here.
Yeah, there's basically no new, no updates on any of those items, is the bottom line, right?
Right.
That brings us to our intern.
That brings us to-
Doesn't it?
No. East Devils Lake Revival.
Yep.
No, I thought he-
Oh, we're jumping?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just said there's no update.
I was going to give you an update on East Devils Lake Revival.
Oh, well, then go ahead.
I guess the NOAA grant didn't come through.
It did or did not?
Did not.
Oh, I did not hear that, okay.
So, they're in the process of seeing what they can do to determine, you know, what the next steps are for the next round of grant funding that's going to be coming through through there. So, that was kind of a little bit of a setback. I stopped in there and I was talking to Catherine down there at the Water State Council, so, last night.
Too bad. Okay. Thank you David. All right, how do you go ahead?
All right, so, in the first few weeks, I've been been updated on some of the safety in lab procedures. Paul showed me how to take lake samples and do the analysis in the lab and also dropping off to our lab in Nescuin. We've been doing water quality outreach on the lake on a weekly basis. We've actually already started learning how to evaluate habs blooms and how to communicate with the public about the safety concerns of cyanobacteria. So, I've been doing some public outreach on that and showing people where the signs are and how to read them and just like what to be concerned about. Also, in the office, I've helped Seth with some of the Devils Lake Revival. I advert, or I made the poster for the advertising and the T-shirt design, which I completed earlier. That's, that's it. And, let's see, oh, also, we received the new pH probe and the meter and it calibrated up fine. And we took it out and did water quality with it on Monday and it was perfect. It, you know, it read normally, so that's good. And also, I've been working on the quarterly newsletters and I introduced two new articles, one of which Paul was wanting me to do, which was the Liminology 101, which is just going to give people more of an insight into what, you know, we actually were doing on the lake and, you know, why we're doing it. And the other one is just an invasive species spotlight, so that people know what they look like and what to do about them. And that pretty much concludes, you know, what I've been doing.
And Michelle's, I think, being modest with the poster design, like it wasn't just the poster. I think since then, we've used that to do all of our ads. So, like the Salem Weekly one, Oregon Coast Today, News Guard, News Times, all of these require different sizes and they need to be like edited and changed. So, it's like, Michelle, we need this in 8.347 by 9.12 and then it changes the next day and she's been really quick in getting all of those. And same thing today, just with the T-shirt design, the poster design that we had doesn't translate to T-shirts very well, so that was like, okay, we have one hour, let's like get something going. And she's been like super responsive and, and then also, did you talk about the educational board?
Oh, no, that was the other thing. Also, Paul has a couple of trifolds in the office that are currently not being used for any kind of like educational. So, he has me redoing them, a large one, which will talk about our mission and the types of things that we try to accomplish or we do accomplish with our district, including like all of the aquatic vegetation management from, anything from like the sewers and the septic revitalization to water quality. So, that will all be on the trifolds that I'm doing. And also, two other trifolds, one of which will highlight rain gardens and the other one, which will highlight riparian zone health and how to restore riparian zones on the shoreline. And, yeah, as Seth was saying about the poster, it was really good for me because I spent some weekend time learning a program of graphic design so that I could do that poster. So, that was, you know, something that I've always wanted to do, but never had any purpose in learning how to do it. So, that was a good, good learning experience.
Yeah, really valuable updates. So, like the blue boards to the trifold is like, and David, you know this, we used them at the Devils Lake Dash, like those big blue, and they're out of date and it's like one of those projects that's like, always gets pushed back, so it's really, but it's a really valuable thing. So, that's something we'll definitely use in the future and updating our listserv format that we use for that too are just like really nice. It's very valuable to the district, the work Michelle is doing.
Great, Michelle, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, water quality. How do you take that Seth?
So, E. coli monitoring, we're now in our ninth week and readings in the lake have continued to be low, with the exception of East Devils Lake State Park had a really high spike and I think we just followed like a bird right behind it or something, but it had, it really exceeded even like our E. coli count, so it's really high over there and I imagine that it's just a anomaly of a bird or an animal being right over there before we went in and got our E. coli test. But apart from that, everything's been low for E. coli readings. Thompson Creek remains to be a hotspot and Dee River has remained low, but typically has become elevated in the later half of the summer when discharges to the Dee River slow. Delusion then reduces and tourism increases, which we tend to start getting more birds on the Dee River side when, later in the summer. And then people are also feeding the seagulls more, which please don't feed seagulls, they follow the water. Habs monitoring now, which the harmful algal blooms, monitoring is showing the beginning of a bloom in the lake concentrated along windswept shores, and this was written a week ago and I mean, it's, the bloom's increasing. This really extreme heat and long days of sunshine typically drive blooms, which we've had a series of warm periods since April. And we actually saw a short-lived localized bloom in April, but then once we, like rains kind of picked up again, cloud cover increased. May and June, that diminished that bloom considerably. The current sunshine that we've had been going, getting through amplified with calmer days of light or light winds has brought the bloom forward. An earlier bloom season, and this, this bloom's a little bit earlier than we see, but this, we're kind of seeing this trend statewide. In 2012, the first reported bloom in the state wasn't until July 12th, while this year blooms have been reported as early as June 18th. Year-to-year variations in weather are anticipated, which greatly influence the timing of blooms. Plastic variations are also altering the occurrence of habs. Globally, the trend is moving to more and more blooms. Contributing factors include increasing global temperatures, changes in precipitation, and increased carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. On a larger scale, paleo-linologic records from sediment cores show that habs have been worsening in Devils Lake at least since the 1960s. Nutrients are a major contributing factor and the degradation of the lake can be greatly attributed to changes in land use such as clearcutting, development, agriculture, and urbanization, beginning around the 20th century. While weather would play a role in annual variations, the overall trend has been increasing for habs. Similarly, while we have had some recent years with increased intensity, specifically like 2008, 2009 was really bad, followed by a period of less intensity, 2010, 2011 then wasn't, wasn't nearly as bad, followed by again, greater intensity in 2012. The larger overall trend has been for increasingly more blooms, so even though we get this kind of slight year-to-year variation, overall, we're seeing more and more blooms.
Seth, do you know how many, I'm always, I think I've seen a couple come in from the habs alert. Do you know how many have posted, how many lakes have posted so far this year?
Around like, I don't have that off the top of my head. From Eilers' report in 2005, it's clear that the carbon and nitrogen content of sediment has increased precipitously in the last century. Prospers trends are less conclusive. The first figure shown below Figure 7 shows the radioisotope dating technique used in the sediment core. And for reference note, then all figures, that the 20 centimeter to the 40 centimeter marks date to approximately 1980 to 1880, respectively, as we move deeper into the sediment and further back in time. Figures 12 and 13 represent the amount of two types of blue-green algae found in the same sediment core. Both Anabina and Gloatrickia have also been on the rise over the last century and both increasing, one logarithmically and the other exponentially. This period of time corresponds to the increase in nitrogen and carbon found in the sediment. So, lately, we've had some people saying, "Well, there, you're not impounding as much water, so is this impacting blue-green algae blooms?" So, we just kind of looked historically and since the district began impounding in the 1990s to at least 2005 when Eilers did their study, the blue-green algae have continued to increase. Elevating the lake level in the summer months, however, is likely not the primary driver to the increased habs, as it's only coincident to what is likely the larger issue of nutrients in the lake. Over a long period of time, at least the 1960s and well before impoundment, habs have been increasing. Impounding additional water did not reverse the exponential growth of the blue-green algae in the study. If anything, it continued or had little or no effect. To reverse to the lake not be impounded or impounded to a lower level, as was implemented last summer, it's likely that such trends would change.
It's unlikely.
Unlikely that such trends would change. Yeah, I knew something and it didn't sound right. Habs will continue to increase until the nutrients come under control. Small variations in changes in lake height, man-made or otherwise, as would have occurred naturally in Devils Lake over the last centuries due to changes in the weather from year to year, have likely much less to do with current habs issues faced by the lake than does the role of cultural eutrophication from the development of the shoreline, loss of forest cover, loss of wetlands, agriculture, and urbanization. So, I think to sum all of that up, we have nutrients, we have warm water, we have sunlight, we're going to be seeing an increase in algal blooms. And you know, the, until we resolve the nutrient issue, you know, those are going to continue to go and they're, it's like not just a trend that we're seeing at Devils Lake, it's statewide and it's at the global level as well. And then apart from that, you know, we continue to monitor for dissolved oxygen, pH, conductivity, temperature, and turbidity. And, you know, we have, you know, if you go to our website, you can get tons of information there, get onto our listserv, go to DLWID.org, it says, "Join our email list" and we'll send you water quality updates there too.
Have any comments, discussion regarding the water quality item here?
I just, I was, I was just looking at the habs information. I find it interesting that, you know, the water bodies that are posting are posting 60 to 90 days ahead of where they were last year. We have water bodies that posted in September, August, and then July last year, so it's quite interesting, the change in the statewide trend this year.
There's nothing we can do about sunlight. We have a sunny summer, spring. Not much we can do about the temperature, but the nutrient, that's what we're trying to do with septic tanks. If we can effectively affect them, affect the algae blooms, I think that's going to be our number one way to go, is to try to get those tanks that are around the lake that are useful lifespan fixed.
Yeah, it's definitely one nice component. Paul is here, I think, for the detailed report.
Yeah, it's an interesting read, I thought, and I thought it was a valuable, valuable bits of information out there and-
Well, to add to that, I, my recent liminology class was with a professor who was an advisor for the study by Ross Kavanaugh, I think, in 1980s. And he basically reiterated that it's a cultural eutrophication effect, it's, that's causing the excess nutrients in Devils Lake. So.
Yeah.
It's from another liminologist's perspective.
Plant your shoreline, inspect some septics, we'll get going on that.
Any further comments, discussion regarding water quality or water quality monitoring?
Yep.
New business? Any board members have any new business to bring to the board?
I just had a couple of things. I wanted to get something cleared up. You guys are totally fair of what the situation is, but I want to know at what point it was decided, and if for certain it was decided, that people that own property on the lake that are not residents of our locality can vote. They cannot, correct?
Well, they're registered to vote here, they can vote.
Well, but if they, if they're registered at-
They're registered in one place.
Right, okay. And how is it that those same people can run for positions? They just live in the, in the area. I don't get that.
Because the statute just says that to qualify as a board, as a director, you just have to own property here.
Very strange, you can't vote for yourself.
Yeah, you can't, yeah.
But you can if you want to.
Well, but I mean, and have it be counted. But, and is there any, any way, I mean, I personally, if I lived someplace else and I had faith here and I use this lake quite a bit, I would want to be able to vote. And is that an impossibility? Can we not, or can the people not decide that if you have property in the drainage, that you can in fact vote here, even if you're voting someplace else? But as far as the special district goes, vote here.
That'd be a matter of state statute. It would have to be changed.
In my opinion, decide that. I've never been confronted with that issue of whether you can just register to vote anywhere as long as it's only one place, but I would imagine if you own property, say you own property in Lincoln County and Multnomah County, that you could register to vote in either place. I may be wrong about that, but I'm guessing that you could and-
But you'd have to choose one or the other.
Yes.
Right, so that's the case.
In any given election cycle. In any given election cycle. I don't think there's anything that says you can, you have to retain your registration in one place or another for any given period of time.
Right.
If you were, per se, have an election down here in May and you registered down here, you could transfer it back up to, you know, in the fall if you chose to.
Well, I guess I'm looking at it from this perspective and would know how to correct me on this, but you can, you can be a resident, let's say in Portland, but you can own a condo here and be in the homeowners association, right, and vote. And what happens to your condo and why you couldn't do that in a situation where you own property along the lake and we're doing things to improve the lake, but you couldn't be in that group.
I think the, you know, the principle behind the fact that you're eligible to be on, a director on this board if you own property here is that it's a taxing district and you're getting taxed. If you own property, you're paying taxes into our district. So, therefore, you know, if you pay, you get to play, you know, so. Whereas, you know, registering to vote's a different concept and I think that's, you know, primarily determined by residents or domicile, but you could say that, well, I'm, you know, I'm, I intend my principal residence to be Lincoln County and change your registration to that. I don't know how often you can go back and forth because, you know, how often do we change our primary residence?
I'm just thinking of the old tenant taxation without representation seems to play a part in this particular setup. Okay, enough about that. I was talking with Bill Sexton and he says at this point, and this was today, I asked him what, what the situation was as far as water in, water out, and he says, "Right now," and I'm not sure where he gets this, but he believes that right now we have less water entering the lake than going out. I think we need to really keep a close watch on that because it's at nine right now and we're trying to-